Good evening and thank you for joining us for the West Claremont School Board meeting this evening. Roll call.
This is Brinkman.
Present.
This is Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Mr. Schatt.
Present.
Mr. Rudy, notify the faculty of the action.
Thank you. I'd like to give motion that we withdraw to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion of or compensation of a public employee. And I need a second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Schatt.
This is Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Schatt?
Yes.
This is Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Or yes?
Alright, we'll be going into executive session and rejoining the call or the meeting at 7:00 PM.
When they break for executive, he turns the masters on. When they break for executive, he turns the masters on.
Mr. Romano, I believe you need to pull us out of executive session.
Sure, it's a roll call to return from executive session to open session. Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Mr. Schaaf?
Present.
Four present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its essence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Adams, before you begin the state of our schools presentation, would you mind if I offer a few words?
Sure.
Great, thanks. Having spent the last 10 years serving this community on the West Claremont School Board, I'm very proud to give you a state of the schools update through my lens. When I joined the school board, I saw the district as being average on student achievement, being average on employee morale, and being somewhat below average in terms of educational opportunities and preparing students for what lies ahead of them after graduation. We had gone through a reduction of staff, an elimination of busing services, an elimination of music art and PE at the elementary level. Some of these things we have thankfully been able to reinstate. A decade ago, we were a divided community, a divided district, having an Amelia side and a Glenestie side. Those days are long behind us. Now we have a single high school that has fostered inclusion, representing one team, one family, and one Wolfpack. This theme is embraced from our youngest learners, the Wolf pups, all the way up to our seniors and extends even further than that to include our staff. The single high school has brought equal educational opportunities for all students and have broadened the extracurricular activities so there is something for everyone. In addition to the off-campus post-secondary learning we have always offered, we've added college credit plus to ensure that our highest achieving learners have an option to stay on campus to participate in that post-secondary learning while not missing a minute of the high school experience. Along the way, the Board of Education has learned the importance of working collaboratively with our community, to be transparent in our operations, to be transparent in our finances, be available to them, and listen. Our success has been measured in the recent passage of the operating levy, which has brought stability to our district's finances. The Board of Education has also learned to listen to our parents and engage them in thought exchanges, an opportunity for our parents to share opinion and give suggestions, which has certainly helped guide us in our decision-making. An example of this would be related to the recent COVID-19 pandemic. Families were given an opportunity to provide their interest on either sending their children to an in-person learning or to have them learn online. In response to interest, West Claremont was successful in rolling out a West Claremont Online Academy, the WCOA for short, and has allowed students to opt-in a semester at a time. Some families have determined the WCA may not be for everyone, while other students are thriving in that environment. The best part, the students that are enrolled in WCOA are reporting that they feel connected to the building, connected to their friends, and are participating in sports and extracurricular activities. It's a complete win for these students. Over the past several years, we have seen academics on the rise, enrollment increasing, and many of our staff members being recognized locally, throughout the state, and even nationally. We're very proud of their achievements. We've been able to provide a Chromebook device for all learners K through 12, allowing us to swiftly shift from in-person learning to remote 2.0 learning. It has required our families and teachers to change direction on a dime's notice, and for that, we are very appreciative for their flexibility. Impact of the COVID pandemic has compromised some on our student engagement. Not all students are able to learn remotely, and sports and after-school activities had to be canceled. But most heavily on my heart, the students who are food insecure, they've gone without meals. Speaking of food insecurities, we have seen a partnership with Cincy Kids for Kids to create a Wolfpack pantry housed at our West Claremont Middle School. The pantry is supported throughout the year by the Cincinnati Food Bank and our very generous community. The pantry is open to our families of our district to visit twice a month upon the recommendation of a staff member. Additionally, the state has awarded the district a universal breakfast program so that breakfast is made available for all students K through 12 at no cost to the student. I am completely overjoyed with the changes and improvements that have occurred over the past decade. I encourage those watching this evening, and those in our presence, to visit the State Cup Report. This is an online report that has a comprehensive compilation of useful data, elements on the Ohio public school systems, and how we compare to others. It gives you data elements such as demographic data, personnel data, property valuation and tax data, and expenditure data. Those last few items are of the most importance for our community. Once you're there, you'll have the opportunity to see that we have one of the lowest dollars spent per student and one of the lowest administrator-to-student ratios. Both of these have been of utmost concern for our community. West Claremont is clearly on the rise, and there is hope for the future. I look forward to the momentum continuing and the next five years being our best years yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Madam President, and unfortunately Jim Rudy's not here tonight. Hopefully he's able to tune in digitally. A year ago at this time, we were marching to march. Every ounce of energy was spent sharing our financial story. The thought of coronavirus was far beyond our borders and not seen as an imminent threat. Our focus was stabilizing our district and continuing to rise. I'm going to take this off. Thanks to our community, we were successful, and we can stand here proudly and say that when the governor closed schools, we answered the call and responded as a community. Together, we served our students by turning our homes into daytime learning spaces, serving over 160,000 meals to all children in our community, distributing over 1,475 Chromebooks beyond our Wonder Wolf program, and we invested over 1,000 hours of professional development. beyond our Wonder Wolf program, and we invested over 1,000 hours of professional development and made thousands of phone calls and electronic communications. We bravely began the 2021 school year, wondering if it would ever be possible to feel settled into a school year again, given the COVID-19 disruption. We asked ourselves, will it ever be possible again to achieve the best results in our schools, given our new circumstances? Defying our own doubts and fears, we worked hard to believe in ourselves and in each other. We've overcome many challenges, shown up for our students, and then demonstrated what we are all about. We are all about loving our students, not through lip service, but through action. Our physical and virtual doors have been opened since August, and our students are getting an experience that many across the area and the nation are not. If I could use one word to describe how we got here today, I would use the word resilience. Resilience displayed most impressively by our students, followed by determination by our staff and families. There is not any aspect of the community and the world that the COVID-19 health crisis has not touched. And this disruption, as strange as it may sound in many ways, has been a source of renewal for us in West Claremont. It has given us a chance like no other to question what we believe is most important, to analyze what we've always done, to eliminate things that no longer serve our mission, to dream about new possibilities, and to have newfound courage to try some ideas and take some risks. This disruption is allowing West Claremont to write a new story. Oh, power. Little thing called power. Thanks for tuning in tonight to hear the state of the schools report that is designed to help everyone reflect on where we've been, where we aspire to go, how we've been disrupted, where we are right now as, believe it or not, we begin to finish the last quarter of the school year, and what is next for each person in helping us to continue to rise. We've been so grateful for and have so many to honor for showing up every day and putting their best foot forward. So I just want to remind everyone to please join us this week for our Love WC Week so that we can acknowledge everyone in their efforts and commitments. It's so easy, when faced with challenges, to look to the mountain ahead instead of acknowledging the journey, and Mrs. Brinkman did a great job of that earlier. To help us celebrate big wins over the last several years, we've included a timeline of significant accomplishments, from uniting to one West Claremont High School and Middle School, to developing our West Claremont roadmap for success, to opening new modern school buildings, to successfully passing a levy, being shut down, and then reimagining and reopening this fall. A lot has happened over the last few years, and we are grateful for the leaders who have made this possible. Speaking of these leaders, our Board of Education has been a critical component to our success. They aspire to be a destination district attracting and retaining families and high-quality staff. Their vision is for students to be provided new educational experiences, to attract and retain talent, and to elevate family and community engagement, to be recognized as an exemplary, innovative, cost-effective school district with student achievement growing, award-winning, and nationally competitive. The one thing I know for sure, bold goals and dreams like these are never accomplished alone. Realizing these aspirations means the education of our youth can't be a spectator sport. We all have to be in the game, all in together. Transformation of teaching and learning starts with this question: How do we create a school system where teachers want to teach and students want to learn? The West Claremont Roadmap for Success was designed with input from all stakeholders to take us closer to meeting the board's aspirational vision. It helps us lead with purpose and helps us to make today better than yesterday. All effective transformational movements begin with establishing solid core values. Our values are relationships, innovation, being student-centered, and empowerment. Foundational to the entire plan is the idea that quality teaching and learning begins with strong relationships, and that's why we use the hashtags #WCcares and #WCconnects to reinforce the importance of relationships and collaboration that leads ultimately to success. True transformation doesn't come from writing a check. It comes from committed people coming together toward a cause bigger than themselves. This graph illustrates how our path forward has been impacted by COVID-19. The uniting of the district, strategic partnerships, investment in literacy, and transformation of modern learning environments have created this positive momentum. However, it didn't take long after the shutdown in March 2020 to see longstanding inequities that exist in our community and in our school system. The COVID-19 health crisis has created a significant learning gap. It has created a spotlight on the equity, opportunity, and resource gaps that exist here. West Claremont has gone without basic educational resources for years, and it's not a can that we can continue to kick anymore without further consequences to our youth. The jagged line you see there represents students who in March had to share one laptop with four children. Two parents working, grandparents stepping in and trying to figure out Schoology and Google Apps for Education. Some students were able to have their own home office and even a tutor. Some of our students in WCOA who have younger siblings that they're caring for, at the same time they're trying to attend their own Google Hangouts and complete their own work with the baby bouncing on their knee. Caregivers who are balancing the demands of their own job to feed their family while they are also serving as a full-time learning coach to their child. And students going to local stores or gas stations to get Wi-Fi to complete their assignments. And we have many students worried about being accepted into college with the new gaps in their learning. We have worked hard to reallocate existing resources, build staff expertise, and create a belief in ourselves and others that we can do hard things and we can keep the gears turning. So we find ourselves asking the questions, how might we be better able to engage with our families and community so that everyone will better understand and help us serve our student needs? What opportunities are out there for more collaboration? And together, how can we build an even more resilient West Claremont? It begins with a bold vision and a collective commitment to understand the needs and work together to address them. One way that we know that we can be better together is through our value of student-centered learning. We heard loudly and clearly from the stakeholder feedback that addressing the needs of the whole child is vital for our success. Success in our mind is broadly defined and goes well beyond a test score. Being student-centered is about academic, social-emotional, behavioral, and physical well-being of each learner. It's about preparing our students for learning and life, no matter which path they choose after graduation. So to help clarify our vision, together as one community, we learn, lead, succeed, we ask this question: What do our students need in learning and life? And today, we are happy to reveal the completed version of our Portrait of a Graduate. It's an answer to that question. It's more concrete, and it's a meaningful way to express our beliefs about student success.
The West Claremont Portrait of a Graduate began simply with a question: What do our students need to be successful in learning and life? We posed this question to students, teachers, parents, community members, and business leaders, anyone that would take the time to answer it. What we discovered is that there's nothing more important to our community than education. But we also believe that education must be authentic, personal, and relevant for all of our West Claremont students. Each student's educational journey is unique, and it doesn't matter which path they take. It's the qualities and knowledge that they take into that path. As a result, we identified a unique set of skills and competencies that our community believes all of our West Claremont students need so that they will be ready for life, in college, a career, the military, or wherever they go in life. Our portrait includes five key areas. In West Claremont, we believe that our graduates are prepared to: create the lives they desire, turn ideas into action, be courageous in the face of challenge, pursue personal happiness and joy, do what is right even when no one is watching.
We can't really know what the workforce is going to need from our next generation, but what we can do is prepare our students with not only academic skills and success, but also to prepare them for the skills that they're going to need to be successful in this rapidly changing world. The skills that our students need are the same skills that our students will always need as leaders, as citizens, as workers. And by West Claremont defining our portrait of a graduate, we are setting our students up for success as they give back to the world and ultimately change the world.
What also became clear is that we cannot do this work alone. As a community, this is our portrait. All of us work together to breathe life into this portrait, our North Star. In order for our students to be prepared for their world, it is critical that we go beyond the four walls of the classroom to foster and develop these skills in our students, and that we begin fostering these skills in our students from their earliest age in school.
The West Claremont Portrait of a Graduate serves to unite our district even further. It's our North Star that guides us toward our vision. Together as one community, we learn, lead, and succeed.
Raising the bar and closing the gap requires us to fully bring our value of student-centered learning to life. The Portrait of the Graduate helps inform our transformational process. It is more important than ever that we be clear about our vision and purpose, as the COVID-19 disruption can easily take any organization off track. The Portrait of a Graduate is our North Star that guides our transformation. Its five statements and 10 learner attributes are designed to capture the essence of what is important in our community for inspiring our children to become happy, healthy, productive adults. It is uniquely West Claremont and locally made. This vision was created with input from parents, families, students, educators, higher ed leaders, faith-based leaders, businesses, and community leaders, as they answered the question, what do our graduates need to be successful in learning and life? And the Business Advisory Council also shared workplace needs and trends to help shape our work. It's about mobilizing all those partners to give us a common language and vision to work with our partners. It takes all of us coming together to bring opportunities to the classroom to help our students engage in a truly 21st century learning experience. And this is not another initiative. This is a focused PK-12. It helps lead our district on a continuous journey to transforming educational opportunity and high performance. This means our strategic plan, curriculum, budget, operations, technology, and human resources will all need to be aligned together, making sure that it is a reality for every learner in our system, because it's about equitable access for all our students. We must create the environment, processes, and support structures to ensure that every learner in every classroom comes to school ready to learn and has the opportunity to engage in high-quality learning experiences, no matter their background, interest, culture, or economic status. The Portrait of a Graduate reflects a mosaic of experiences that we want all of our students PK-12 to have, things like the WC Year Future, internships, and field experiences. The middle school new sixth grade experience focused on STEM and humanities with an emphasis in authentic, relevant, and complex learning that we do with our community partners. A strong focus on foundational skills in literacy, numeracy, and technology, and a robust social-emotional learning programming and activities at all levels. We hope that you can see that we're working very hard during the pandemic to not let go of our vision and goals, and that we've made the necessary route adjustments along the way to best respond to the needs of our students and staff. It takes everything in our power to keep the main thing the main thing, teaching and learning. This requires considerable courage and effort, and every day has its challenges. I just turned it off. Sorry. Our home life, work life, and school life have been dramatically altered, and we can't underestimate the fact that each person is affected differently. This trauma, for the first time in our lifetime, has been nearly universal. A high school student told me that he was glad to be back in the school and around people, but even with being in the brick-and-mortar setting, he said he has never felt more lonely in his life. Our community has endured a lot of sadness and loss. It's a daily challenge, yet we persevere. Before 2020, you all know, we were walking around with cracks in our foundation. We hadn't passed an operating levy in almost two decades. Our schools, when compared to schools like us throughout the state, have less staff, less curriculum, technology, less mental health supports, less professional development, less collaboration, less resources, and these challenges led to staff turnover, lower academic performance, and lack of student engagement. The community at large was facing an opioid crisis, a rise in kindred care, poverty, lack of access to technology, and families were frustrated with lack of transportation and specials in the elementary. Bulldozers could be found on every corner, and change and hopefulness was in the air. Even with these cracks and missing pieces, West Claremont has shown resilience and a strong will to overcome. We built a return-to-school playbook with Stop the Spread protocols. Families have been amazing in their support, partnership, and understanding. We've been able to add daily subs to our buildings, grow our subpool with a third-party provider, create ways for sports fans to watch live streams of our events, expanded the Wonder Wolf technology for every student in grades K through 12, and thanks to grants, we've increased access to Wi-Fi throughout our community. Created a Wolfpack hub to improve communication, build trust, and connect families to resources. Invested in new technology tools, made building schedules and master calendar changes to respond to needs. We created a WCOA, an online academy, in a short amount of time, serving 1,800 students. We've invested in sufficient labor to bridge some gaps and updated our district office structure, relied on our partners, and activated all learning plans to keep us in school as long as possible. And I could go on and on with all the work that people have done. With this COVID-19 health crisis, students feel more anxious, stressed, and unsure. Staff feel overwhelmed, inadequate, and at times feel underprepared more than ever to do their jobs. They are sad for the lack of normalcy for kids. Everything they do takes additional thought, precaution, and effort. Finding a rhythm in classrooms feels almost impossible. Learning loss has been inevitable. Yet, with all our efforts, the COVID-19 has highlighted our gaps and our vulnerabilities and created even more challenges to overcome. Anxiety, lack of student engagement, fear, new ways of learning, depression, loneliness, these are big problems, and big problems require big solutions. So at this time, I'm going to ask Treasurer Dan Romano to come up and give us a sense of how our financial picture has been impacted and speak to some of the investments that we have made to keep us strong.
Mrs. Brinkman, board members, Superintendent Adams, thank you for the opportunity to speak and talk a little bit about the finances of the school district.
I think this is an old version.
Hmm?
This is an old version.
Are they in there?
They're not. There's an updated version. Can you just go to the link in the board meeting? Maybe that's the best way.
I can do that.
Jeff, can you help him? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I need some, I need a handler.
When you have several iterations of a presentation, that's what happens. So talking about our financial picture, and this is really only going to be about four slides, but I'm going to try and summarize. But the first thing that I wanted to look at and talk to you about was where you came from in the financial picture. And when you look at the chart that we threw up here, it really is looking at our five-year forecast, which was done in November of 2020. So if you go back, that was the last forecast before the levy that was done. It's a very easy chart to look at. Anything above the line is good. When it starts going below the line, it's not so good. And the term that I use is a perfect picture of a district that is in fiscal distress, headed for fiscal distress, and I think you were all aware of that as you went forward. What needed to be done was an injection of additional revenue. Some of the things that you both, Mrs. Brinkman talked about, Mrs. Adams talked about, was this district for years has done a lot without, with very little, and the accomplished a lot with that. In February of 20, COVID came. In May of 20, a levy that was passed by this community really brought the district out of fiscal distress. And really, when you look at where it was going, kind of out of bankruptcy with that. We could not be more appreciative to our community, to the board members, the employees of the districts, but really to everyone within this community who came and voted and voted positively for that. If you looked at the previous chart, you saw some lines that were below, or some bars that were below that graph. All the lines here are above that, except for that difference between our revenues and expenses. So the dark blue line, and if we go back to FY '17, there was a cash balance. Previous chart, it showed that when we got to FY '20 and '21, that cash balance was eroded away and was actually below zero with it. The 7.99 mils equates into $11.5 million per year, really made up for that deficit. There were two things that the district made a commitment to. One is that it would maintain the same level of services that it had for our students, and secondly, that it was going to make that levy last until 2024. Okay, four more years to do that. Okay, those are typical promises that a district has to make. If you're going to ask people to provide more funds to us, you want to tell them how long it's going to last, or the minimum number of years that that will last to it. And so that one event really brought us out of that fiscal distress and is looking at leveling things out for a couple more years yet, which is good. Both Mrs. Brinkman, Superintendent Adams, really spoke to the difference between us and other school districts. There's comparisons that we make. There's other school districts within this state. There's over 600 school districts within this state. The state looks at the profile of all the school districts and put us into a group of similar school districts, looks at that average. And FY '20, and Mrs. Brinkman, you talked about the CUP report that was there, these numbers are all there. It compared what we look like to both that similar group and to the state average. We are, in essence, $2,300, okay, $2,364, $2,263 less than the similar school districts. That's on a per-student basis. It may not seem like a lot of money, but when you multiply that times 8,000 students, that's $18 million. If you look at the average within the state of $12,692, average that gets spent on students, and we are $2,991 less than that, that equates into $24 million. So even the additional $11 million that we get, and again, other districts are going to be raising money and have raised money, okay, it still leaves us below those averages with that, on both the similar and the state averages. You know, when I discuss things with the cabinet, one of the things I talk about is when I first came to the district, people told me how lean the district was. And at that point, I never really understood it until I got more involved with it. And lean can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people out in business. It's a term, it's a really set term. It means both efficient and effective, right, with the districts. I think we have to be careful, you know, saying that we're lean and telling people that we're both efficient and effective. We are efficient, okay? We have to be to do that. But we also need to be effective, and if we don't have the right essential resources, that's difficult to do with it. What did COVID do to us? If you look at the chart that I threw up here, there's really, kind of look at it in three ways. This breaks down a per pupil cost, per pupil revenue, per pupil savings, and then there's an unknown off the right side that I'll talk about. But the first two bars really talk about the COVID costs and COVID savings. And there is kind of a net effect of what COVID did. There are some things that we didn't have to do because of COVID, but there were some additional costs that were there. So on average per pupil, okay, not just in our district, but in all districts, it's probably about $600 per pupil that it costs a district. If you look to the third bar, which there's nothing there, it says union negotiations. We're appreciative to the fact that even after passing the 7.99 levy, both bargaining units came to the table and last summer took a zero on an increase, okay? When I look across 600 school districts around the state, that is a very unusual thing to have happen, okay, to do that. But that was a big help to this district in moving forward. If you look at the funding level, we have there the CARES money, there was two rounds of CARES money for school districts, there was CRF funding. Those investments that we made within the school district speak a lot. We made sure that there were tablets in every student's hand so that they could go online when it was necessary to go online. We developed curriculums so that we could go online, so that if students weren't face-to-face, they could go online and still that learning could be created with it. There was the broadband effort to make sure that every student could be plugged in and could be Wi-Fi enabled to do it. The state cut some funding from us recently, and last month and a half, the governor gave some of that back to us, which was a help. We're hoping that as we sift through the new budget bill, that we can be back to levels of 2019. So that's an odd statement to make, that here we are in 2021, that we hope we can be back to a funding level that's two years ago, two and a half years ago to do that. The governor also helped us out by working with the Bureau of Workers' Comp to give us additional funding on that. But the far red bar on the right, okay, is something that Superintendent Adams talked about, and that's this learning loss that's been created. Do we know what cost that is yet? No, but we do know that it's a cost, and it's going to be a cost that we're going to have to inject into our system to make sure that the students are brought back to the level that they should be at. There's been recent studies that really go from a low of $2,500 a student per year up to $10,000. Again, we don't know what that cost is, but we know that we have to approach that and provide the right resources to bring those students back to it.
Now, to talk a little bit about our path forward, we know that we are not at the beginning of this health crisis, and we know we are not at the end. We know we're somewhere in the middle. We also know that we are part of something really special in the history of the world. The students in our schools today will likely become the second-greatest generation ever because of the challenges they have endured. The seeds that are growing inside their hearts and minds today will likely result in some of the greatest solutions to some of humankind's biggest challenges. In West Claremont, we are inspired by our students, and we have hope for a future and yet some more challenges ahead. We fully believe that when we put students at the center, support our staff, and work together with families, community, and partners, we will write a new story. We are all wolves, and we will come out stronger as a pack together. Committing to excellence with every learner, every day, every way, means that we have to shift from our response to COVID to a response to the effects of COVID through a deeper implementation of our strategic plan. And what do I mean by deeper implementation? In the same fashion that we accelerated the Wanda Wolf access to all students K-12 years earlier than anticipated, we must invest and accelerate our focus on transforming teaching and learning. We will transform teaching and learning by raising the bar and closing the gap through increasing student learning opportunities, enhancing our continuum of education for diverse learners, creating investments in math curriculum, by building capacity in all our staff, and continuing to strengthen our efforts around foundational literacy, numeracy, and technology. There are things we know at this point about next year, and yet still many questions that have to be answered. Some things are in our control, and some things are not. How will the West Claremont Online Academy evolve? How many students will choose that option to return? And will they choose based on COVID-19 health reasons or because of it's a new innovative instructional model? Knowing that our kindergarten enrollment was down and that this is a nationwide trend, will we have oversized kindergarten next school year? How do we continue to retain and recruit expert staff that we need? And what additional legislative changes will there be? We must continue to share our financial realities with all stakeholders, and we must make investments that will build capacity in our staff and our students. We have to advocate for our students locally and at the state level. In West Claremont, together, we will finish this year strong. Our board meetings and the behind-the-scenes efforts will be focused on improving the student and staff experience as we prepare for the 21-22 school year. And this timeline shares a rough estimate of where we believe we will be in our decision-making process over the course of the next couple months. We end today's presentation with asking, how can we, as educators, help promote community-wide resilience so that we can bounce back from adversity and thrive as a school district and community? Peter Block, expert in community engagement, says, "How do we change the world? One room at a time." Which room? The room you're in. We know the answer begins with us, continuing to modernize and advancing education for the whole child with everyone doing their part. And as Mr. Gephardt, the high school principal, always says, "Everyone must hashtag own it and be responsible for their 20 square feet." For our students, it means continuing to follow the WC Stop the Spread protocols and engaging, connecting, asking for help, and continuing to have high hopes and dreams for their future. For families, it's about the heroic efforts continuing of following the protocols, making home a good place for learning, helping their children with reading every night and doing their homework, also helping them to relax and de-stress and have some fun, and creating hopes and dreams for their child's future, volunteering, getting involved in our schools. And bold moves from the community need to be to stay informed, sign up for our community newsletter, follow us on social media, and partner with us to provide the summer learning that we need to for our students, to fill the library contributions that we need to advance literacy in our district, and to continue to partner on the West Claremont WC Your Future initiatives. Today, I would like to close with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to encourage all of us to stay resilient in our efforts to commit to excellence with every learner, every day, and every way. "If you can't fly, then run; and if you can't run, then walk; and if you can't walk, then crawl; but whatever you do, you have to keep moving." Do you guys have any questions? Okay, then we'll just move on with the agenda.
We thank you for your presentation. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We were provided the agenda several days ago, and hearing no objections, do we have a motion to adopt it?
Gentlemen. Second.
Discussion of any kind? Roll call.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion approved. Next on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any cards?
I don't believe we had any. We did not.
We did not. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Romano.
On the consent agenda, there are several items. Item 7.01 is the approval of the minutes for January 25th and for February 8th. The February 8th was a regular meeting work session. And then I'm going to skip 703 for right now, but 7.04 was the donations. We had several donations. First was from Staples Beachmont, donated 25 care packages consisting of school supplies for students at Withemsville Tabasco Elementary. Staples Beachmont also donated school supplies for students at Holly Hill Elementary. Tracy Gross donated 20 pairs of new shoes for students in need at Holly Hill Elementary. And Mark Brooker donated 60 lunch boxes for students in need at Holly Hill Elementary. Item 7.02 are the financial reports, bills paid, lists, and investments for the period ending January 31st. And item 7.03 was the personnel section.
Good evening, members of the board, Mrs. Adams, Mr. Romano. In front of you is the personnel agenda for Monday, February 22nd. On the agenda today, we have resignation and retirement. I wanted to take a moment to just point out Lynn Mack. Lynn Mack has announced her retirement. She has spent in the teaching profession for over 26 years, so 19 of that has been with West Claremont, and I believe she was at Willowville that entire time, if not the bulk of that time. So we wish her well, and she'll be greatly missed. Also on the agenda, we have the hiring of two school psychologists and one guidance secretary for the high school. Along with that, we have the extended days for the new psych hires. The extended days are part of their position and are necessary for work that's required over the summer. Also on our agenda, we have the proposed hiring of Lorraine LaPomer to our cafeteria manager. She's replacing Rebecca Wolfick, who was on last agenda, last month's agenda, who moved to the Child Nutrition Administrative Assistant. So we welcome Lorraine. Also, the agenda includes proposed approval for supplemental appointments to clubs and advisors, teacher leaders, the middle school and high school spring coaches, some classified substitute support, and a school at the bottom, a school student-teacher volunteer. And finally, on the back, we have a proposed stipend approval for mentor teachers and high school musical support. So I respectfully request that you approve the personnel agenda as submitted.
All right. I'd like to put the consent agenda as presented on the floor in the form of a motion and ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Delaney. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mr. Shat.
Yes.
Four yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to superintendent's business, Mrs. Adams.
Yes, I just want to re-announce that this week is Love WC Week. It's in full force, and we just want everyone to celebrate with us. I want to call to everyone's attention that the spirit day for tomorrow is have courage, have heart, be smart, and love WC. So it's Dress Like Your Hero Day. And as you all may know, we are doing a community food drive. You had mentioned Cincy Kids for Kids and the Wolfpack Pantry. We're also supporting IPM. And so we know sometimes the giving gives off during, or kind of trails off during this time of year, and so we wanted to make a big emphasis and give back to our community what has been given to us.
And the acronym for IPM is the Inner Parish Ministry?
Yes, ministries. Yes, thank you. We use so many acronyms in education, I just forget sometimes. Friday, this Friday, we'll be working with Kroger to complete round one of Pfizer vaccinations at West Claremont High School, and round two will be on March 19th. And so we will be sending out a communication to our families, updating our master calendar for March, April, and May later this week to address the needs of these vaccinations and the recovery time, as well as collaboration and some testing that will happen in spring. And so we need to accommodate for all of these And so, we need to accommodate for all of these things in the spring in our new circumstances in both the brick-and-mortar school as well as WCOA. So, they will see some changes coming very soon. I also would like to share that on Friday, we'll be doing our Partners in Education Zoom Breakfast at 7:45 in the morning. They will hear a version of the State of the Schools presentation, and will also recognize a partner in education for every single school and one for the district. And so, we are excited to be able to celebrate our partners. We know that we wouldn't be anywhere without the partners that we have in this district, and we are grateful. You can hear from the donation list of just the people who care and continue to give to us, and we just want to take a moment to celebrate them. So, we hope people can tune in for that, and I believe that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay. Thanks.
Moving on to treasurer's business.
Thank you. There is one more action item. Again, with the consent agenda, there are certain things that we request the board approve outside of that agenda. Item 9.01 is a resolution, recommendation to approve the resolution accepting the most responsible and responsive bid in connection with the demolition of Brantner Elementary School and authorizing the board president, treasurer, and the superintendent to enter into a contract with that demolition service. That service is A1 land development, it's in the amount of $118,500. Also with the documents was the recommendation from the architect and the bid tabulation. So, that item number is so recommended.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The, this is just for demolition, correct? This is not for abatement.
This is just for demolition. We did the abatement, I believe, at the January meeting.
Anything further?
Nope.
Roll call.
Mr. Shaff?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
The comments are, I just want to make sure that the board's aware, we did finalize the comprehensive annual financial report by January 31st. That was submitted to the auditors, was also submitted to the, to the associations for their review. We will have that posted online shortly. Just speaking of being posted online with the website, we did do several updates to the website, putting the five-year forecast out there, make sure that was out there and some other documents to do that. Also noted that there was the delay in the bills for the real estate taxes, but glad to announce that we did start receiving the advances last Friday, so that track of receiving those, those funds are about 30 days off due to that extension that was provided. So, we're glad that that is coming in. Looking forward to spring.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to board business, Mr. Chumley, you want to start us?
Sure. I'd like to thank all the kids who put time and energy into these cards. I love getting these and reading through these. I want to thank Mrs. Brinkman, and Mrs. Adams, and Mr. Romano for the State of the School reports. Every time we have conversation, you can clearly see where our focus is, and you can see that through things like our vision through the portrait of a graduate. And I just love the passion and energy we put into things like this, so thank you, guys.
Anything further?
Nope. That's it.
Mrs. Delaney.
I want to reiterate what Mr. Chumley said. Thank you to Mrs. Brinkman for giving us the nice recap, but also to Mrs. Adams and Mr. Romano for the State of the District address. That is just such a great opening prelude to what this whole week is about, our Love WC Week. We have a lot to celebrate, so I encourage everyone to, you know, the students to participate in the different spirit days along with the staff, and then our community members, you know, share your success stories and your kudos. There is a lot to be excited about, especially now that we're in the middle of the doldrums of winter. I am very excited about the Portrait of the Graduate, having two graduates from our district. I was a very fortunate parent that my children knew what they wanted to do and what they needed to do to do it, but they're an anomaly in this world because there are so many opportunities for our students. And I really believe that this Portrait of the Graduate is going to help the students that may be struggling with, what do I want to do when I grow up? It's going to help them to be able to focus and do some research and figure out what they want to do. I want to throw out kudos to the women's swim team at West Claremont High School. We had five young ladies who, in the first time in school history, qualified for the Southwest Ohio District Swim Meet. There was, they qualified in the 400 freestyle relay, and one individual qualified in the 100-yard breast stroke. So, these are, you know, again, things that, with the resources that we've been able to achieve over the last 10 years because of the great work, our students are getting other experiences in their life, and that was something very exciting. And then to call out one of the points that Mrs. Adams had in her report, one of the caveats that asks for help, and that falls under the students, and it falls under our staff, and it falls under our community, it's okay to ask for help. I know a lot of us have been raised in the environment that asking for help shows weakness. Well, asking for help actually shows that you're willing to learn. So, don't be afraid to ask for help. It's not a sign of weakness. It just shows that you've run out of options, and you need to find where there are more answers. So, please, you know, ask for help if you need it. And I'm just, Go WC.
Mr. Shaff?
I want to thank Superintendent Adams, Treasurer Romano, and the whole staff. The State of the Schools, I agree, is just, it's definitely a very beginning to this week. I know that this, this hasn't always been like this, and I'm grateful for where we're at and where we're going. Other than that, I don't really have much.
Okay. I have a couple shout-outs. Earlier in the school year, I think, Mrs. Adams, you told us that we had our first West Claremont gymnast, and this is a young lady who trains with the Anderson gymnast team. Well, I'm happy to report that she has qualified for state competition. So, kudos to our first and only right now gymnast and the luck tour in the state competition. I also want to make mention of something else that you told us about a couple weeks ago. The high school is actually hosting the Division II Girls Basketball Regional Tournament and the Division I Boys Basketball Tournament. And I've been at many of the games just to support the athletic department and those that are volunteering to help them. It's very rejuvenating to see that we have people from our volunteering, regardless of the team that they support, to support the basketball tournament. We've been able to run the concession stand throughout the tournaments, which is a feat on its own, and been successful at our children, our high school kids, working out the parking lot, collecting cash for parking. So, they're capitalizing on a money-making opportunity while hosting an event, and it's been really pleasing for the referees and the families that are coming in to visit us to say how much they appreciate the facility, how beautiful it is, and that they're just happy to be there. But most importantly, I'd be remiss if I didn't make mention of the volunteer, or being volunteered, staff members from our custodial staff and our maintenance department at the high school that has been at every one of these events. And I know a lot of times that it puts them behind on their routine cleaning of classrooms and other things of that nature. So, I wanted to make sure that they knew that it was very appreciated, regardless if they were volunteering or being volunteered.
Volunteled.
Volunteled. It's very much appreciated. And Mr. Collins had mentioned to me that we need to decide whether or not we want to try this again next year, and I suggested very firmly that he, you know, talk to the staff to make sure that it wasn't overload for them, and perhaps maybe tapping into the other buildings that may have other custodial staff or maintenance people that might want to volunteer for the extra overtime. So, thank you for everything that they've done to deliver a nice product and represent us very well in the community. Anything else from anybody that we've forgotten about? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mrs. Delaney, and seconded by Mr. Chumley. Roll call.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Shaff?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
For yes to adjourn.
Motion approved, and thank you for joining us. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March the 8th, at 7:00 p.m. Good night.